October 21st, 2024, St. Clair Shores City Council Meeting to Order. Abby, please call a roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubella?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go to item two, which is proclamations and presentations, to send very sad news, and it is the passing, we learned on Thursday, the 17th, of Mary Kautowski. Mary Kautowski was a long-term clerk here for 22 years. She worked before that in Warren, in Chesterfield Township. She worked in the public sector for more than 40 years, dedicating her life, as I said, to the public sector, and had, obviously, the passion for voting. She was Clerk of the Year in 2009, and I say Clerk of the Year in the entire state of Michigan, that's how well Mary was thought of. Anyone who was up here knows that she ran flawless elections in St. Clair Shores. She had been recognized with proclamations from the House and the Senate of the Michigan State Legislature. So, again, just well thought out on many different boards and commissions throughout the state, as many times they would reach out to Mary for advice and guidance on voting. And the thing that you can hold up as a person, either as a public official or in working in the community, is that you have your integrity, and there's no question that Mary Kautowski had integrity, and we all knew it. And nothing more when you want to leave a job and a career knowing that you have that great integrity, and she did. So, gone way too early. She was gone in '21, so she'd only really had a couple of years of enjoyment in her retirement. So, I will ask for a moment of silence for Mary Kautowski. Keep her family in her prayers, and I know that, I believe, her niece is working on arrangements, so I'm sure they'll be coming out, I believe. So, sad. Item two, again, is the proclamations and presentations. We have one, and that's from the Waterfront Environmental Committee. I know we have a number of members here. Come on up. Yep, come on up, right behind Heidi there. Oh, yeah, take your time.
Again, condolences from Mary Kautowski's family. That's very, such a nice lady, such a wonderful person. So, we are the Waterfront Environmental Committee, and we are here to tell you about that we are stressing education more and more, and we are expanding our scholarship program to include students that are from green teams in the city.
Heidi, why don't you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. I'm Heidi McInnes, and this is Nancy, Kath Nixon, Mark Malin, Sharon Curry. Mark Malin is our co-chair.
Right.
Sharon is our secretary. Erin Liberty is our treasurer.
And my mom.
Mom, Marilyn. So, we wanted to let you all know that we are expanding our scholarships, and we're looking for green teams who want to come to us with their projects, and we'll award money for them to buy materials to complete the projects that they've devised. So, we are also still doing our individual scholarships for high school juniors and seniors, but we've extended the deadline a little bit to December 9th, and students can look at for our scholarship application on our website, which is www.scsvec.org.
Say that one more time.
www.scsvec, for Waterfront Environmental Committee, dot org, O-R-G. So, all that information should be up there in the next couple of weeks.
Fantastic.
And so, these checks are just representative, your name could be here.
Sure.
Or their green teams could be on that list. And again, with education, we are devising, expanding an Earth Day, Family Fun Day in April. It'll be April 19th, and at Veterans', and we're kind of excited, something new for us to work on and educate the public.
Sure, that's great.
On environmental issues.
Good.
And Erin here has run the I-94 freeway entrance and exit cleanups for 20 years. And Mayor, I think you wanted to...
We do, we do. We have a... Erin, why don't you put that down and come to the center?
I just found out about this. It was a ruse.
I had to keep it a secret.
It's a worthy proclamation, so kudos to the committee and that for recognizing, you know, we do appreciate all the work. So, I'm going to read the proclamation. I need the glasses, I think I could make it, but not sure. Proclamation to Erin A. Liberty, whereas the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores acknowledge the time, efforts, and contributions of residents of the city of St. Clair Shores, including the contributions of the Waterfront Environmental Committee member Erin Liberty. Erin has served the city of St. Clair Shores by enhancing and beautifying the entrance to the city by coordinating the I-94 entrance-exit ramp cleanup. Since the founding, the I-94 entrance-ramp-exit cleanup project in 2004 during her tenure as a council member, Erin has dedicated herself to this initiative for two decades, leading as many as 70 volunteers at a time in efforts to beautify our community. Erin's contributions extend beyond the I-94 entrance-ramp cleanup. She has been instrumental in preserving the quality of Lake St. Clair by participating in the annual Nautical Coast cleanup and educating residents of all ages about the importance of clean water. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of all our residents, extend our gratitude to Erin Liberty for her commitment and impactful service to the city, and wish her continued success in her future endeavors. Congratulations and a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real honor.
Good. You've done a lot, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We want to thank all the mayor and all the council members who have helped us with all our projects and helped us with this, too.
Hold on, hold on.
Microphone.
Good?
Sure.
Good?
Yes.
Bing, bing, bing. Okay. And yes, Heidi, I mean, it's, this is just such an honor, I'm kind of choked up right now. Because I'm glad you mentioned about the council members, because I think every single council member up here has been involved in one or more of our projects, including the I-94 cleanup, and it's, it's just, it's been a wonderful labor of love for 20 years. I know Joe St. John, he was the one that actually start, oh, he actually started, I had the idea as a councilwoman to do the project, and he was just like, what a fantastic program when people enter into our community to have the best first impression ever, despite people throwing, you know, the trash when they stop at that light at the side, and those drains draining directly into Lake St. Clair. But he was like, what a great project, and with open arms, and everybody from the committee. Just labor of love. So, hopefully another 20 years.
You go.
So, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Keep it a secret, Erin. Didn't tell you when you saw me.
Go buy her a drink or something like that.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, too, the seat is empty. We have our city manager over there, he is not feeling well, so he is over there trying not to, truthfully, not contaminate everyone else. He is pretty sick, and I do appreciate him coming in for important meeting today. Item three is audience participation. Abby, do we have any?
Yes, we have one speaker, Dave Deacon, a St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on agenda number five.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the item five, under the recommendations, I would suggest that there should be a change in the wording. It says, it reads an increase of 836,000, and I think it should be changed to 836,000. The way it reads, it looks like they want a million and a half.
Right.
So, if they get it, I'll come and help them spend it.
Thank you. And that was it, right, Abby? That will go to item four, which is the planning case, public hearing for consideration of vacation proportion of Hazelwood Street within 27900 Rockwood, between Rockwood and Little Mac. So, we're going to have a public hearing on that, so I'm going to open that, public hearing. Do we have anyone here that would like to discuss the vacation, the portion of Hazelwood Street between 27900 Rockwood and Rockwood and Little Mac? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Good evening.
Hi.
Hello. We just need your name and the city you reside in. Yeah, wait till you get to the mic, then pull that down right, so we all can hear you.
My name is Dawn Bean. My name is Dawn Bean. My family and I, we live on the corner, the northeast corner of Brockwood.
Pull that microphone down. The mic.
Talk into the mic, pull it down.
Talk into the mic, sorry.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
We live at the corner, the northeast corner of 2800 Rockwood, it's a corner of Rockwood and Hazelwood, so there's our house and the neighbor across from us, and we're the portion of Rockwood and Hazelwood that dead ends with the fence, and then the tennis courts are right behind us.
Right.
I'm concerned and want to make sure, or want some confirmation, that in doing this vacating, that that portion of Hazelwood is not going to be affected, and that that's still going to be owned and maintained by the city. We don't, we don't want the liability, because that's a major thoroughfare for the schools, the Jefferson and everything, so we just want to have some confirmation that that portion is not going to be affected by this, and that it'll still be maintained and owned by the city.
Okay. All right, we'll get that for you, but no problem.
I'm sorry.
We'll get it for you, we'll answer that question here. Anyone else would like to discuss this at the public hearing before we close it, and then we'll get Liz Coto up here, and anyone else before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and then Liz, come on up, tell us a little bit about that and answer the, if you can, answer the question, too.
Good evening, mayor and council. Liz Coto, city planner, I am here tonight before you to request the vacation of Hazelwood Street between 27900 Rockwood and Little Mac. So, if you look up on the screen, this is what you would now consider an imaginary street. The basic situation is that MDOT contacted us saying they did not have record that this portion of the street had been vacated, even though it is listed as vacated in various property legal descriptions. So, we combed through our records, and we couldn't find record of it, so we figured the easiest thing to do would be to re-vacate the street. And in answer to Ms. Bean's question, I talked to her last week, two weeks ago, about this as well, her area of the street would not be vacated, it's just the area that is more or less between the fence lines of the tennis court. So, any other portion of the street would remain public and available. So, once this is approved, then we will send the resolution to MDOT, and they will update the official state map, indicating that this is no longer a thoroughfare to get you from Rockwood to Little Mac.
Questions. Mr. Vitale?
Liz, should the resolution contain language, like that you would see on a deed or something that would say vacating the western 300 feet of Rockwood, like actually contain, so that legally it says how many feet we're vacating?
Yes, we would want that. So, what we can do is we can send it to Vicki, and she can then craft the exact language, the sort of meets and bounds for it, and then that would be the language that we can include in the resolution and send it off to MDOT.
So, that should address the residents' concern?
That's correct, yes, yes.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I've been up here like, I think, 15 years at this point, I've never been asked to vacate an imaginary street.
Right? Interesting one.
So, this is kind of, yeah, I'm reading this, and I'm like, wait, this is going across tennis courts, so I know this just seems like it's a formality to formalize something that probably already was done a while ago.
Yes.
So, it's my honor to make a motion to vacate the imaginary street, and using the language, including the language as referenced by Councilman Vitale.
Support.
In the resolution.
Ms. Rusi, supported by Ms. Rubella. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All good.
Thank you.
Item five is request to approve the budget amendment for the Nine Mile Water Main Replacement Project by the Macomb County Public Works Office. Mr. Babcock, Director of DPW, good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here requesting approval for a water main replacement project. This is a project we actually started last year, it was included in the fiscal year '24 budget, and that's to replace a water main that is east of Jefferson and Nine Mile behind Fishbones. It's a, it's a large transmission main that carries a lot of water back into the Shore Club and the, you know, condensed housing area of all the condos, the tower. We partnered with Macomb County Public Works Office on this, as you know, they're doing a big construction project down there, and in the beginning of the project, we saw that there was going to be some conflicts of utilities down in Nine Mile, and they offered to replace the water main at our cost, but then ultimately they'll be paving the road as part of the project. So, we are saving some money instead of having to do this water main project on our own. When the project first started, the cost was $710,000, and that was brought to council last year, actually, last October. Since that time, Eagle has came back and they changed some requirements of what they want done during the project, and that has increased the cost to $836,518.33. So, that's what we're asking for approval of a budget amendment for tonight. Again, it was in last year's budget, it did not get spent because the project didn't get done, so the money went back into the water fund, and so we're asking for a budget amendment to pull that money from the water fund and put it into the current budget for this, this project.
So, the increase due to Eagle is basically $126,000?
Yes, sir.
Yep, right, okay. Questions? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. You know, Brian, the increase has to do with the type of pipe that it is? That change?
And they do want...
They do pipe bursting anymore, we have to do open cut to remove it all?
Correct, they want the pipe removed out of the ground, open cut, instead of pipe bursting.
Do we have other, so I guess maybe an advisory going forward? I can't imagine how old that line is with the type of material it is, but that basically any of our engineering firms are working on a water main, they have to know that upfront before they make that decision outright, because it, I talked to Vince today at the county, just to get some clarification, and EPA changed some rules, it's basically that nope, that type of pipe needs to come out, it can't stay in the ground like we would normally do with a pipe burst.
Right.
And that, and that's what led Eagle to change the requirements on it, so I don't know if we have many of those other pipes, or might be adding that to the list of...
This is the only section that we know of.
Of that type of pipe? Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So, to Mr. Deacon's point, absolutely, the word "to" should be in there as opposed to "of", so my question is, the repaving of Nine Mile starts where, at the driveway at the farthest end, farthest east end of that, and then it comes all the way back to...
Jefferson.
All the way to Jefferson?
Well, I...
Or is it to the Fishbones Park?
They're running a new storm sewer down that Nine Mile, and I forget the limits of exactly, I think it comes out of their parking lot at their driveway, so somewhere around the edge of the basin, I believe, is where their new storm sewer is coming out.
Okay, and, yeah, all the cracks and everything are already there.
It's horrible down there, so it's...
Oh, yeah, yeah, don't drive down there and take a look, because it's...
Yeah.
You got to drive around things, so, all right, well, that's great. I would make a motion to approve the budget amendment to fund the Nine Mile Water Main Replacement Project at a cost, total cost of 836,518.33.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess. Mr. Rubella?
Yeah, Brian, I just want, this is all part of, like, if people are watching out there, it's part of the $43 million project that's going on for Chapaton, it's all connected back in there.
Yeah, yeah, but it's the same contractor, it's going to be doing their swerve.
And then the pipe bursting versus, you know, replacement total, the pipe bursting seems to be like a quicker way of doing it, and you can cover more ground, but they don't want that because, what, asbestos or things flying up that have been in that pipe for a while?
Yeah, they don't want the pipe left in the ground, they want it dug up and removed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to say is, I'm not aware of any pipes that are made of asbestos.
Some stuff...
We don't have pipes made of asbestos.
Asbestos concrete.
It's, yeah, it's, they use, they've used asbestos fibers within these water mains, and I believe it might be coated on the inside, but this was, this was, I mean, there's cities around Michigan where the entire city is this type of pipe, so it's...
Asbestos is dangerous when it's friable.
Correct.
It's not dangerous when it's underground.
Right.
So, we're spending $126,000 extra dollars because of federal regulation that doesn't want a naturally occurring mineral to be in the ground. Just a perfect example of, you know, overreach and overregulation by a federal government agency, we're going to spend an extra $126,000 now, but my point was, we're not, we're not passing people's water through that, but, okay.
Yep, Eagle's a state, state requirement. Anyone else? Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess, to have the Nine Mile Water Main Replacement Project at a cost of $836,518.33. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Seven to zero, thank you. Item seven is the Police Department, new buildings, there's four items here, and by weight, number six, Linsky Green, that will come back, we hope shortly here, but, so we're just working on still getting some more information regarding the roof. So, back to number seven, Police and Fire Department, new buildings, request to approve Cunningham Limb and the city of St. Clair Shores to execute a guaranteed maximum price for the corresponding and supportive exhibits for the police and fire buildings. An approval? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Sam Ashley with Cunningham Limb. In your packet and on the screen is a truncated version of the packet, that's before you. As many may recall, we were last before this group in July at the city council meeting to walk through both the design development drawings, as well as an updated design development budget and an outline schedule associated to that. Since that time, the construction drawings have been completed, they were actually completed on August 30th, they were sent out to Public Fid on September 5th, which was the following Monday. There was one design addendum that was issued to that design packet that was incorporated within the bidding, comprehensive bidding efforts. Bids came back and were due on Octo, Octo, excuse me, October 2nd. The team comprehensively reviewed them for completeness, and then the results of those bid efforts were shared with the user groups last week. Comprehensively, as, as we look at the bid coverage that was accounted for, from a qualified standpoint, there were 340 total bid results that came in, they averaged out for police and headquarters, the police headquarters, four to five bids per trade, and then for the central fire station, five bids per trade, and when you look at bid coverage from a metric standpoint, if getting three qualified bids per trade was 100%, we exceeded that, so our bid result metric was 166%. Comprehensively, as we went through it, the low qualified bid for each trade has been carried over into the schedule of values, which we'll go into detail here shortly. When we look at the project, the base scope of works, again, have been enumerated here by project type, again, those will be accounted for independent of each other. There was some additional added scope of work from the design development plans to the completion of the construction drawings, really from two points. One was there is a categorization of previously accounted for in the soft costs or owner-procured items that were requested to be bid out, so those bid, bid results were included in the construction costs that are here and are accounted for within those numbers, as well as during that design amendment, there was a requirement to adjust the foundation substructure associated to the police department to include a GEO peer, and again, I'll go into the enumeration of that. So, as we go into the, into the packet, the next sheet that is within that packet is the detailed schedule of values associated to the GMP, and again, these have been broken out by building type. The first, as we go through, again, in the similar categorization, it was what was put together during the design development budget, itemized from, and again, this is for the police station, but the summary as it results to staffing, general conditions, site work, as you go through and you see the call out of bid pack A as an example, as you go to the corresponding summary of bid results that have been provided to the city, you'll be able to see a direct correlation to the low qualified number that then carries over into this, this, this outline of summary costs that are here. But again, we've gone through, itemized those out, you'll see bid packs A through double P, so again, great coverage from the subcontractor standpoint of what's there. Taking into account the additional requested scope of work for the police station, the total with the base results and the additional scope of work is, is $12,695,730. Again, within that total for the police department, it has been identified that there's just over $490,000 of costs that would get, that are within that total, that would get accounted for by a, by another funding source, and there, there was one requested bid alternate that was, has been outlined here, and again, at this point, it's, it's not recommended to go forward, however, if there's a decision at a, at a future date to bring that forward, it certainly can be accommodated. The detailed summary as it results to the two categorizations within the police headquarters of added scope of work should be two, two pages forward, yep, right there. So, again, the, the added scope of work value of $826,000 is primarily broken into two items, as I mentioned earlier. The GEO peer allowance, which you'll see at the bottom of the sheet, brings, breaks out the itemization associated to the $449,000 cost to that, and just, just to clarify for the group, that is a engineered, specific sub-foundation system associated to the soils and geotechnical that the structural engineer requested to become part of the project as we were working through both the final completion of construction drawings and the final bid packs that went out. But again, we have outlined interior signage, window treatments, again, those were line items that were previously in the owner costs when we look at the total project costs, but not in the construction costs, those were bid out, bid results, and now are included within, within the GMP amounts. As we look at the detailed itemization associated to the central fire station, again, same format that was put together, we have the same totals as we look at staffing, site work, building... We have the same totals as we look at staffing, site work, building, any of the special conditions, bonding amounts to get to the GMP. The comprehensive construction GMP for the fire station, again, is $9,516,470. In that amount is the breakout value associated to some of the other funding sources associated to most of the underground infrastructure associated to that. And again, we were requested to bid out four alternates that have been itemized within this packet. Again, a decision to go forward on those can be made at some point in the future. Within, within the fire station, again, we discussed the items that were brought into the construction bidding process, which again, account for some of the equipment, the low voltage systems. Again, you'll see other sites within that packet as it relates to rappelling anchors, floor hatches, epoxy flooring in lieu of polished concrete, again, and interior signage, and things that are traditional equipment procured items, but again, have been bid out and captured within the packet. As we presented to the user groups, we were asked to prepare a document comparing out what was categorized as the police and fire initial budgets, and then itemize out the added scope of work that came into it. So what you see on the screen is the itemization associated to the police headquarters on 10/23 of '23, so almost a year ago. The, the budget associated to that was just over 10.9 million. And then as, as the outline of added costs from over the last year, again, from really schematic design through design development through construction drawings and final bidding. If you were to add that total to that 10/23 date total that was there, you would see that amount is just over 13.1 million. The bid results for the GMP are at 12.6 million, just over 12.6 million. It needs to be pointed out, though, that the 13.1 million dollar number has soft costs like AEVs that are not within the bid out guaranteed maximum price number, so I just want to clarify that. And then as we look at the itemization, similar concept for what, the number that was established by a non-associated consultant just over a year ago for the fire station was 7.5 million. When Partners in Architecture was brought in, they suggested that amount should be increased, and the amount increased that was recommended was 475,000. If you were to add those costs together with the itemization of additional scope of work items and change that evolved into it, you get to the line item that's in the middle, the 9.8 million dollar number, just over the 9.8 million dollar number, and then benchmarking it to the construction GMP number, which is at the 9.5 million dollar number. Obviously, a lot of work has gone into the detail and the composition of what's there. From a timelining standpoint, the outline schedule that was presented back in, back in July, we're staying to that. We did miss, I think we were targeting to be in front of this group on the 7th. Because of the design addendum that was issued, we wanted to make sure to capture that in the bidding efforts so that we had comprehensive and conclusive results from that packet, which is why we're back one meeting later than what was targeted. But from a construction duration of 15 months associated to the police department facility as well as the 13 months associated to the fire department are still on track in those timelines, in total, the aggregate amounts have not changed. So happy to walk through any questions. I know that's a lot to take in here.
Dustin, do you?
So before we get started with asking Sam some additional questions, this item here is to address the guaranteed maximum price with Cunningham Limp. But as part of this as well, as Sam did mention, this is just a hard cost. There are additional soft costs that do go along with this project. So if Cunningham Limp is worth this project and we do move forward with the police and the fire station, there are additional soft costs. You'll see that at the back of your packet where it says police headquarters. We have the revised soft costs for that. As Sam has mentioned, we did take some of those soft costs and remove them and put them into some of the hard costs. Some of the bigger items was the cabling and for the door access, along with some of the window treatments and some of the things that Sam and I discussed. When we previously came to you in July for the design development, those soft costs were at 2.212771 million dollars for the police. Those are now down to just $2,1881. So the soft costs did go down by approximately $200,000. You can kind of see the line item out information. For the fire department, you're gonna get into the back sheet of the police one as well. The fire department's soft cost, when we came in front of you, was $1,035,934. That new revised budget is $969,268. So that one went down as well. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that when this is approved, we're not necessarily approving the soft costs. Obviously, these aren't, how they've gone through, but this will be an additional fee outside of approving, approving Cunningham Limp's maximum cost amount to the overall.
I got Steve freaking out back there.
I'm sorry. Sean pushed down. I'll push, I need to push turn, I'll push, I said from the back.
Yep.
So can you run a little bit through, I understand what 7A the request is, which is for Cunningham Limp and not, not to exceed. But the entire cost we have right now is, to do it all, is 25 million, right? I mean, that's at the end of the day what we're going to.
That is correct. So the total cost of the police department, including hard cost and soft cost, is 14,742,223. The fire station is 10,592,860, for a total of 25,335,83. Those are also on your ARPA project list that includes both of those projects.
And then, tell us the ARPA number.
So the ARPA money that we did receive this, from ARPA, was 21,247,393. We currently have spent and allocated a little over $5 million of that that were projects that were outside of the police and fire. That does include the pier was the largest one at 2.3 million, and the two next largest significant ones were the lead service line replacement at 827,668, and the water rate stabilization of 1.2 million. And then there's a lot of ancillary ones for Coffin Park renovation, cart path, wealth playground, pickleball courts that have already been put through the ARPA funding currently. The other larger main item is the project administration oversight, which the price for that has increased. That is because this project is not scheduled to end until March of '26, and that would be the administration cost to get all the projects from beginning to completion.
Questions regarding this? Mr. Vitale?
Just one thing I wanted to point out, because it was referenced at the Blossom Heath Pier project, and that is on here as road and seawall. So that's not really the, the new pier extension. That was work that we had to do.
Yeah, so the Blossom Heath Pier project, as we all know, that was a large pier project. Tifa funded 6.6 million of it. The city funded the 2.3 for the grand total of it. That was carried over from the previous designs. I'm not sure exactly by what it was.
I just-
Yeah, it's just part of the whole pier.
Yeah, I just wanted people to know that that wasn't, didn't have that pier because we spent ARPA money on it. We had to spend money to stabilize that seawall regardless of any new pier project. That was money that had to be spent, so.
Mr. Rubello?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Dustin, just to reiterate, the total cost of the whole hard and soft costs is gonna be in the neighborhood of $25 million.
$25,335,000, yes.
All right, so-
But what's in front of us here is 7A is-
Right.
Is 22,212,000.
Yep, and Sam, if you go under that, that line sort of in the sand, what happens to the money? It comes back to us?
Yeah, so the way the agreement works is 100% of unspent dollars go back, so we would have to do a deductive change order at the end of the project, but those go back to the city. So 0% retained by the construction manager, 100% of savings are returned back to the owner, which is the city.
And if the line in the sand, if you exceed the line in the sand, what happens?
That comes out of our side of the equation.
That comes out of, okay.
Correct. There's no upside risk associated, I just want to clarify, there's no upside risk associated to the guaranteed max on behalf of the city. It is different, however, if somebody says, we want to add one of these options that aren't approved, then that amount would have to be changed.
Correct, right. The meetings that I attended, you guys were very knowledgeable. I think, especially Mr. Vitale, I know he, he prodded you to see if you could come up with different things and not have to do a total redo on a building. And I think we exhausted a lot of the possibilities, and, and I thought it's nearly impossible to get a 21st century building into what we were first looking at. And I think everyone sort of realized that in the beginning. I learned a lot in the process. I give a lot of accolades to the people, and I'm talking the fire, I was, I was on the fire committee. So I think we went through a lot. I think we turned over a lot of rocks, moved a lot of bushes, and decided we're gonna need a total redo on that, on that station that has been, I don't know, it might be 70 years old. It's sort of exceeded its limits. I think everyone sort of realized that at one point. And like I said, it was, it was, it was nice working with you. Study sessions, we had a lot of back and forth, a lot of meetings, and these have been going on, anyone listening, it's not like this just popped up. I mean, it's just been going on for probably two years? Is that how long we've been dealing with this?
Our Cunningham Limp's involvement started in December of this year.
Yeah, you came a little bit-
Correct, but there was a design effort that was happening-
Yeah, I mean, we went back and forth so much with this, I think we covered all our bases, we lost the company over it, so, because we weren't satisfied with what was happening. So I, the competitive pricing, the bids, I, listen, I think we did everything that we could. I think we covered all of our bases, and most of this money here, I think is the big part of it is, I'm not sure, the percentage is somewhere around 73% or 74% of this money is coming from ARPA to build two 21st century stations that we need to do because of, you know, it attracts new policemen, new firemen. They want to work under nice conditions. This is, these are attracting, you know, in interest, some of the best people, and I think that's important. And I think, and I, and I think that by putting these buildings in, you know, we're doing someone a favor that's gonna be replacing all of us one day, so they don't have to look at this, and they're good for another 50 years. So I think that's a pretty good deal when someone else is paying the freight on 74% of the bill, because I'm not sure how somebody would build another police or fire station in these conditions right now economically. It may take, what, you might have to have a miller go into the general fund, go grab a lot of money at some point. Would you agree with that?
Well, we certainly don't have the money. I mean, our rainy day fund's $14 million, so we don't have anywhere near that to do anything like that.
Yeah, so I would, I would, I would say that we're never gonna get a better opportunity to build a 21st century fire station, main fire station, we'll call it, and a, and a police station that, let's face it, it was, this stuff's falling apart, it's old, and it's, I won't say non-functional, but give it a few years. So I, I just think of a vote, you know, in, in, in my opinion, a vote for this is, it's a vote of support for the people that, you know, in all said and done, we do a lot of stuff, we have the Halloweens in the parks, I've said this before, we do a lot of cool stuff here in St. Clair Shores, concerts and all that. But I think the number one thing people will always appreciate, and I think they always want, is a quick response when they're in trouble, either with the police and the fire. And I think that this is a great way to attract, we have a wonderful police and fire department now, and I'd like to keep, I'd like to keep that trend moving. So there'll probably be other questions, I'm sure, but I'll tell you what, I've, I've talked about this for the past year, and I, we've all heard, we've had, at least I've had every opportunity to ask any question I ever wanted. So with that, every once in a while, I think historical votes come up, up here, and I think this is one of them. I think this is something that the city of St. Clair Shores, the residents, the people here, the businesses, they can be damn good proud of what's sitting out there for the next year and what, what we intend to build. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the contract with Cunningham Limp and to execute all exhibits for a guaranteed maximum price of 22,000-
22 million.
Or 22, 22 million, I was, 22, 22,212,200 for the police and fire building capital project.
Support. Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick.
I just had one quick question.
Yes, Mr. Frederick.
On the geo piers, how many are there?
Scott Wheeler with Cunningham Limp, there are estimating to be approximately 200 of them.
Okay, and this was based on soil borings or something?
Yes, the lower level soil borings, soils appear to be inadequate to support the spread footings.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. No real questions in terms of the Cunningham Limp, the work that you guys did, the bids that you've got. It's basically, my comments were basically were the overall project, how we got here. So I remember going back to the initial walk-through to the police station. I actually wrote up the list of the wants as we walked around, better storage, more cohesive layout, actually wrote up this whole list, typed it up. Chris actually included it verbatim within the RFP that went to the Architecture Services. So I think we all agree, you want better buildings, it's a matter of how much is it gonna cost and how we're gonna pay for it. Councilman Rubello brought up a couple of figures of 70% coming from ARPA. Not sure where those numbers come from, because if you look at the future agenda items that we've got tonight, we're moving ARPA money around to where one scenario, no ARPA money goes to the police station, only goes to the fire station. Another scenario, maybe a couple million of it goes to the police station. So I think the figures might change later depending on how that vote goes. But I think we all want to give our employees the best that we can, is how we pay for it and how much resources are we gonna use from the future to get into it? Because what I'm worried about, I know we got contract negotiations coming up next July, first one since we've had the over 20% inflation. They're due a bigger raise than what we've ever done before. How are we gonna pay for it? That's my concern. So when we've gone from where we first talked of 16 million to now over 25 million, it's very concerning to me. So I'm gonna be voting no on this out of, I'm not seeing where the end game is here, where we end up financially, especially since we're talking about how do we fund it after we approve spending the money? Think that's a little backwards. That's all.
And then I'll, Ms. Rubello, I'm just gonna say one, a couple of comments myself. So I am going to vote for it, and, you know, this has been, has been a prolonged project. And there is, we obviously know this is definitely exceeded what we started with. You know, three and a half years ago was the first, May of 2021 is when we received $10 million, 50% of the $21 million we were gonna get. So this, this process is near- So this, this process is near four years old of, of the whole ARPA and what we're going to do with the ARPA. And since then, in those three and a half, four years, right? No question, the numbers have gone up, inflation has gone up. I think we thought in the beginning that we would be able to possibly retrofit some of these buildings. And I think personally, I did not sit on the committee, but having some involvement, came to the resolution and conclusion that the new buildings were the right way to go. These buildings here as, are about 65 years old. And the mayor was Tom Welsh. We think about Tom Welsh, who would be almost ancient here, is the individual who stood over these buildings in, you know, 1957, 58 and 59. We got a lot of good years out of them. But it's time that we, I think, put that money back into these, these buildings here. So we do get something like 50 years with it. Again, no question, this is an extremely expensive project. Thinking about it, it's probably the second most expensive project the city's ever undertaken, lock St. Clair initiative here in the 2001, probably the largest one, this being second at, at $25 million. So again, but I tell you, when you, we've had these discussions and we've had study sessions and brought these buildings in front of us. These are not Taj Mahals, these are functional buildings so that they will be here for 50 years and that they will take care of many of the needs that are required in both of these departments. And yes, how are we going to fund it all? There's no question, down the line here, we're talking about bonding, right? We, because we are, we cannot afford it all with the cash. So we're going to have to bond. There's no question about it. It's probably somewhere in the area of 15% of this project, 18% of this project. That's not a lot. I don't exactly agree. I understand if you take 7B, we very well may be near $18 million worth of ARPA funds. If we, we move that money back into the ARPA funds, we're going to be close. That's where I think Mr. Rubella gets that 73, 74%. But that's quite a bit of money. However you want to think about ARPA, how it all got here, we, we ended up with a great gift. And I think we are doing something transformational. People talk about that, I think Mr. Hackle talked about it. That's why he put money there in the new jail. Public Commissioner Miller believes putting money into this pipe that's going to hopefully come down Jefferson Avenue to help clean the lake is transformational, and I believe this is transformational. I do believe that, you know, I'm an old man and the people coming behind us will not have to have this albatross around their neck. And, and we have thought about this for more than a decade. We understand these were old buildings and we sat up here wondering how we were ever going to pay for it. And by Lord, it, you know, that this came through ARPA funds and it is a large percentage of that. And I think that it's, it's the right way to go. And I think that all of these in front of us, I'm, I'm, I'm for them all. I think that's where we got to move, we got to talk a little bit about them. But I think that's absolutely where we have to go. And what else is there in that city right now? If you look about it, it's these old buildings that are near 65 to 70 years old that need to be replaced. And I, I think it's the right move, so I will be voting for it. Ms. Roussie?
Thank you. Just agree with Councilman Karen and incorporate the comments I made at the previous meeting when we last discussed this in the summer, I think it was July. Even look, the project estimates have increased since July. You know, you look at the first project list, which we're still calling this police station renovation, expansion, architectural services, which it's not expansion, renovation, it's rebuilding, it's built, new construction, right? So we still calling it that on the projects list, which is funny. But the costs are related to the, the project currently being discussed. In July, the estimated cost for a police was 14.35 million. And now we are up to 14.75 for the projected cost. Fire was 9.9. And again, this represents incremental increases since we first started discussing this. Even in July, in July it was 9.9, now it's 10.6. So it just keeps increasing. Back in October 23, when we put out the RFP that resulted in us employing Cunningham and Limp, we have put the maximum, the city has a maximum total budget for the projects of 18.4, which again represents increases from the initial amount that we were discussing, including fees, general conditions, soft costs. So even that 18.4 did incorporate the soft costs at that point. And contingencies, completed construction, temporary accommodations, even include the temporary accommodations of the departments during the construction phase. And now we're way at sea of that. And even when we hired Cunningham and Limp, the question was asked about this 18.4 number, the mitts from the December meeting where we hired them. Mr. Karen said Mr. Lynn asked each company if our budget was realistic for the proposed projects, a Cunningham and Limp firm that was. So it just to see it keep increasing, increasing, increasing is shocking. But we've discussed that back in July, so.
So there's a motion, Mr. Vitale.
I was just going to make one more comment on the process because something Dave touched on is that, you know, in terms of the fire department, I was very hard to convince to go forward with a new station on this. I mean, I can, I can go into specifics. We were shown the failing brick up on the second floor. And I said, what was a dumb idea 65 years ago to support 50,000 pounds of brick with angle iron? Take it down and put up metal panels, solved. But what I also came to realize is that it was not the most efficient layout. I had said hollow this building out to a structural steel shell and remake it. Well, no matter how you did it, you couldn't get us, our prior architects that even with an entire new plan, we can't do a pull-through station, which of course is the most efficient, instead of trying to back ambulances and fire engines in every time they return from a run. So at that point, I said, well, then there's no point in building a new building then. We're not really getting much more efficiency here. We're not really getting a whole lot more. And I said, you know what, I don't think this architect can do the job. And we had a special meeting, we all got together. And we said, you know what, I think we need to have another architecture firm look at this. And partners in architecture came back right away and they said, you can do a pull-through on this lot. And all of a sudden, when I saw that gain in functionality, then the idea of a new building became a lot more justifiable. And, you know, that's obviously where we went from renovation to replacement. It was mentioned to me earlier tonight, well, you know, you live in a house that was built in the same year as the fire station and you didn't tear your house down. Well, true enough, but you know, my house doesn't have to pass all of the state regulations and things like that and the codes that have changed. And I don't have to attract people to live in my house, I already own my house. And yes, I have expanded the house because in today's world, you know, people want bigger family rooms that they can't touch with both ends. And, you know, so there have been things that I've done. The, the city doesn't have that leeway to do with a municipal building. And I do think to not do this is somewhat, you know, cowardly because we're just kicking that can down the road. There will be some future council who will have to deal with it. And we get pats on the backs for not spending the money. And I, I'm willing to stay, this needs to be done. Now, as to the cost of it, yeah, it's expensive. You know, I remember four years ago, $3,500 would get you a decent drive to work car, and now it's seven grand. And the way that ARPA was administered, by putting these tight deadlines, by giving it to every municipality in the country at the same time, the typical stupid way the federal government works, it inflated the hell out of construction material. And I think that once the deadline for ARPA passes, you're probably going to have a huge slump in the construction industry. Because all these municipal projects will have been spent out. The problem is if we don't comply with that spend, then we lose the $20 million. And there's no way to make that up and make that make sense to lose that money. So yes, things cost what they cost. I'm, I'm angry that we're in such an inflationary cycle and that ARPA helped cause it. But the reality is, things cost what they cost. And to not utilize this federal money would be stupid. It would be very bad for the residents and bad for us in terms of public safety and recruiting and everything else. So this is not an easy decision to have to spend this money, but it does have to be done.
Moved by Mr. Burgess?
I just, I just wanted to say that what I wanted to say Chris said, you know, kicking the can down the road for another council in a few years when it crumbles away, they'll never have these funds like this again. I mean, this was like a one-time huge gift to be able to use these ARPA funds to do 70% of the project. But we'll never see that again. So when we kick the can down the road, sure, we might be dead and gone. Well, hopefully not, but
Hopefully, I don't want to be.
The next council that has to make this decision won't have this ARPA grant. And then that's really going to be, I know it's a lot of money, but I think that we can find a way to make it work now.
Mr. Karen?
I swore to myself I wouldn't reply, but I didn't sit in a whole bunch of meetings getting upset, seeing costs go up and up, estimates go up and up, designs go up and up. Because I was interested in kicking the can down the road. I would love new buildings. I don't know where else we're going to pay for it. That's all. This isn't, we're not trying to kick the can down the road. We're trying to get something that we could afford. That was our point. I didn't waste all those time in those meetings because I wanted to kick a can down the road.
Moved by Mr. Rubella, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the contract with Cunningham Limp to execute all exhibits for the guaranteed maximum price of 22,212,200 for the police and fire building capital project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to two, passes, thank you. Appreciate it. So you, you get the timeline.
Correct.
Thank you. 7B, request approved, reallocate the lead service line replacement and water rate stabilization funds from the water fund balance to the ARPA funds. Dustin?
In July of 2021, council passed a motion to amend the utility rate ordinance.
They can hear you, you know what, why don't you use this mic? Well, play.
In July of 2021, council passed a motion to amend the utility rate ordinance 25. Dot 260, chapter 34 dash 10D. In order to keep rates lower for residents due to then unknowns of the pandemic. Previous city manager Matt Koppler recommended the following use of ARPA funds. $1 million for lead line replacement and additional $1.2 million for rate stabilization. At the time, it was recommended there were so many uncertainties on the health of residents and the economic impact on family and businesses from the COVID-19 virus. Three years later, our fund balance, working capital for the water fund is a little over $5 million. Reallocating this $2 million back into the ARPA fund still leaves approximately $3 million in the water fund balance. This would leave us still a fund balance of approximately 25%. Under the Treasury's SLRF, which is the ARPA funding, you can reallocate any of the money into the deadline, which is this December 31 of 2024. So as kind of mentioned up here before, this money does have deadlines with the ARPA spending and even allocating. So the money has to be allocated and confirmed before the end of this calendar year. And then once it's been allocated, the projects can now no longer change and the money must be spent by the end of 2026. So you do have an additional two years once you allocate the money to spend the remaining amount. So what is in front of you today is to reallocate the funding from the water fund back into the ARPA, which would allow us to have an additional $2 million to be utilized for the police and fire building.
Questions, Ms. Roussie?
Thank you, I have a question on the Treasury rule that was cited, 14.9.
Yes.
The question being asked that the rule is, you know, answering is can a recipient amend how it previously indicated was spending ARPA funds in order to direct funds to the new eligible uses? Not just to amend it period, but in order to direct funds to new eligible uses that came out in the 2023 rule, I think. So it's not just can we amend it, it's can we amend it to, in because new uses came out in 2023? Is new buildings a new use from 2022 to 2023?
So buildings are not a new use, so we would be.
Just hold it up closer to your mouth.
So buildings are not a new use for 2023. As you'll see later on in our agenda items, buildings are only eligible under our replace revenue replacement and/or funding through other allocated sources. So the eligible items, we will just be reallocating this money. And I guess we could piggyback this onto item number 7C. As you'll see on 7C, we're recommending to utilize two different options. One would be for personnel costs for police and fire. The other would be for lost revenue. The third would be for administration. And then the final category, if we kept water service replacement in there, would be for the water projects. But this has been vetted, we already have talked to individuals through the ARPA. We are able to reallocate the money. To answer your question, we've also checked with our auditors as well. And we have gotten permission that is eligible through our auditors as well.
Okay, because how the rule is written, sounds like it's specific to the circumstance of the reallocate, not just a reallocation occurring, but occurring in order to take funds from the old uses to fund the things that were new uses that came out in 2023. So we did vet that?
We did, we have vetted through our, the ARPA and as well through our auditors.
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Was the auditor opinion any type of writing?
It was, I have it in an email.
And we didn't get, that didn't get sent to us?
We got that one late Friday afternoon.
Okay, it's now late Monday evening?
I can make sure you get forwarded that from the auditor.
Because here's my problem, is that I brought, because this came up in July. I had a conversation with the auditor in prep for this year's audit. And I raised a specific issue. Because there was questions at the last one, well, maybe we might have to redo audits or whatever. And she's like, well, you don't go back and redo audits. And while she did say, yeah, you could do that, it ends up bringing a little more scrutiny to what you're doing in terms of you make changes like this at this point. So that's one concern. Yeah, you can, but you're going to draw more attention to yourself. And after looking at what it's 7C is proposing, that's going to drive in more attention. So that's one problem. And the other part is, when we did this in 2021, we had, the initial ARPA funds were given. It was a, back then, a relatively small amount for lost revenue. And we, back then, calculated that to be around $3 million. And the rest of it was going to need to go into infrastructure projects at that time. That's when we made this decision. Let's fund the lead light pipelines and then let's stabilize the capital fund for the water fund so that it wasn't have to go to water rates for that year. So I think just pulling it back out now goes back in commitments we had back then. I think it jeopardizes water rates going forward. We know GLA is going to want to do a large increase because they get their budget caps lifted this year. They're no longer going to be held to the 4%. So we have no idea what they're going to do. And bringing it down to $3 million as a capital, that's just one year of water main replacements. That was our budget this past year for water main replacements. So to me, that's not a healthy fund balance for that because the, the infrastructure fund balances tend to be a bit different than general fund because you've got to plan for a catastrophic failure. We have a major transmission line that goes down. You need to have the funds be able to repair that right away. So I'm not in favor of moving the money out of the water fund back to, this would technically be moving it to general fund, basically.
Totally.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mr. Frederick?
I would move to reallocate the 2 million, 27,668,69 from water fund back in the ARPA funds that was used for lead service line replacement and water front, water fund projects to help stabilize the water rate.
So I'll support that with a question.
Question, Mr. Rubella?
Okay, so lead service lines, a while back, two or three weeks ago, I think, I don't know if Mr. Babcock's still here.
He's not.
But anyways, I asked him a specific question, this was a couple of weeks ago. And we are, our lead service line program, we are all caught up. We're pretty much sort of ahead of the game right now, as the city goes.
Well, I think Dustin can answer that, but I don't know if the answer is ahead of the game or that. We have gotten to a limit where, where we are working with a few last ones here that we are struggling to get into the home to get it done, is that?
That, that is correct. We have got the lead lines into residential homes down to under 20. All of those 20 still, and it's under 20, I think it's around 17 now. Those 17 still receive certified mail that says we want to get in to replace yours and we have not been given access to their homes. Every few years, when that house turns over and we notify the new owner, they're letting us in. But at this time, every lead service line that is in our city has been replaced or the resident has been notified and they have chosen not to replace it.
Because obviously to all of us, I mean, those are, you know, a safety issue, lead and water and all that type of stuff.
We're doing everything we can.
Yeah, we, we're, okay, because I know, every, periodically, I, I'll answer that question. Because that's sort of like sitting in the back of my head. Because that's sort of like sitting in the back of my head. And without moving the water fund, what would we be faced with to finish off a station's? Villages? Going deeper into a rainy day, into the general fund? I mean, there's the other end too. What happens on the other end if we didn't do that?
So as stated in the last sheet of your last packet, with completion of all the projects, we are looking at a balance, a remaining balance of approximately $6 million, which would mean we have a $6 million shortfall, which we could either be handled through numerous different ways. It could be used from the rainy day fund. It could be used through bonding. It gives you many options and many opportunities. If we reallocate the $2 million from the lead service lines, because those were water eligible projects, back into the general fund fund balance, we'd be left with about a $4 million shortfall. So we'd be looking to utilize bonding and/or the general fund fund balance at that time. So it's a difference of $2 million, and it's up to council's direction of how they want to be able to fund those projects. But I do want to clarify that those two projects, if we didn't have the ARPA money at that time, and hindsight being 2020, the nice thing is, is normally you can't go back and make any changes. This, we are able to. We are able to look back, and both of those projects were water projects, and they both were eligible to be used underneath the water fund. So they were water projects utilizing water fund.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, I don't want this to get lost in the whole, in the whole thing of what we're doing with the stations. To me, speaking for myself, this is a good thing. This is the thing that the city should be proud of when we're doing some beautiful projects like this. On, I don't know, John, maybe it's not 74% or, it's up there, though. It's probably really close to. And we're using their money. And we're, we're on the right track. This is a good thing, okay? It's a good thing to have these things in your community. Should be proud of it. So I'm not saying anyone's not proud of it. I'm speaking for myself. I'm proud of it.
I just want to go back to Mr. Lent, to Mr. Karen's question. So you have that, you do have that in writing from the auditor, yo and yo.
That is correct. We have it in writing from yo and yo.
That what we're, what here is acceptable?
It is acceptable.
Okay. Other questions? We have a motion by Mr. Frederick, seconded by Mr. Rubello, to reallocate $2,027,668.69 from the water fund back into the ARPA funds that were used for the lead service line replacement and water fund project to help stabilize the water rate. And then you will send that email tomorrow morning?
I suggest send it tonight.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to two passes. Thank you. Item seven C, which is to request approval of the ARPA allocation to the state.
So to continue on the, it's kind of the same line of the conversation. American Rescue Act was signed on March 2021 to refine financial assistance to communities affected by COVID-19 pandemic. The law authorized $350 billion in funding for state, local, and territorial and tribal governments. Based on this formula, St. Clair Shores received $21,247,393. In the agenda package tonight, you will see, as indicated by the ARPA regulations, we have to be able to document all of our expenditures by December 31st, 2024, and have those expended by December 31st, 2026. So what we are now asking is for a motion to submit to the state the final ARPA allocations for all of our projects. And what you will see is a list of eligible expenses that we'll be utilizing. There was two different scenarios in here based upon how item number seven B would go. So we will, since seven B did pass and we are reallocating the water fund, we will be utilizing project list, the second one in your sheet, which, the three categories that we will be utilizing is payroll for public health and safety employees, which is EC3.1. That will be fire wages and police wages from March 1st, 2021 through 6/30/2021. And this will be for 50% of their time worked in regards to COVID. Police would be for 25% of their work for COVID. The finalize and the allocation of the numbers are on your sheet, along with all the documentation for the calculation of those wages. Then also be costs associated with administration requirements of the program. That is EC7.3. That is the project administration and oversight. The total number is 493,45,50. That expenditure is also documented, and that is for administering the cost of all of these projects. And then you'll have the revenue replacement, which is EC6.1. Through the state, at the very beginning, their final rule stated that everybody got $10 million worth of lost revenue. If you received anything more than $10 million, they had a formula that you could utilize for lost revenue. Our lost revenue form is in there. If we were to calculate it ourselves, obviously, we are in our final year of that calculation. But we are significantly staying under that number to make sure we stay in compliant, and that would be the revenue replacement, which would be the $13,666,130.47. So in order to just get to that number, we had to just utilize some of the projects we've already utilized, which is, once again, all the projects I said, peer the ADA door. And we just put the costs associated with the police and fire building because it fit right into that number. The police department building would be utilized from the savings that we would receive from the payroll from the public health and safety that would be cut back to us in the general fund fund balance, which then would be turned around and utilized for the police building. So that would be the request for city council is to approve the projects list for our ARPA funding.
Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the final ARPA allocation report to the state of Michigan based on what our city manager just explained.
Support. Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Vitale. Clarify the exact one, right?
Project list number two, that does not include the water and the lead service line or the water fund rate stabilization.
You concur with that, Mr. Frederick?
Yes, I do.
Supported that by Mr. Vitale.
Yes.
Fellow?
Just one thing to add to that. Dustin, you looked through the whole thing. I mean, there was, there was a lot of numbers, a lot of stuff in here, and everything looked queued up to you?
Correct. Fortunately for us, with the lost revenue and the payroll for the public health safety, these are the two most common things that are being utilized by majority of communities, along with administration and water and infrastructure.
All in favor? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, so just some additional concerns. One of how we get to the end here, and all of a sudden, we switch from having a full projects list to almost half the money now going to payroll. That's just, to me, like a very significant change right here at the end. One of the categories that is used to justify the switch to the payroll was public health and negative economic impact. And as a part of this, now granted, he's asking us to approve a project list so that they then can turn around and submit some document to the state that we're not going to be approving. But as a part of that, they're going to need to provide a brief description of structure and objectives of assistance programs, including public health or negative economic impact experienced. Brief description of how recipients' responses related and reasonably proportional to a public health or negative economic impact of COVID-19. And the payroll goes through, one of the cases goes into June of 2022 in that. So I guess, I don't know what's going to be written up to justify that. And I do see why, why all this, you know, we've been going all along saying ARPA is going to be used for buildings. And I know I kind of picked on Councilman Rubello's 74% figure. But as I read through the list today, after we got what were the allowable expenses for capital expenditures, yeah, new buildings are not included in there at all. And actually, the only reference to either police or fire in the entire list is that there's one line item of technology and equipment to allow law enforcement to efficiently and effectively respond to the rise of gun violence resulting from the pandemic. That's the only actual reference to police in that whole list of capital expenditures. So I can see why now at the end, we're being asked to reallocate. So that's all.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Frederick, seconded by Mr. Vitale to approve the ARPA allocation report to the state of Michigan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to two. Thank you. And then seven D is request to, moving forward with securing bonding information. Mr. Lent, this is, this is not asking for a bond? This is asking to talk to bond council, et cetera?
That is correct. So as we are, just went through items seven, A, B, and C, there is a lot there. And even with that, as you saw in the very first budget, even reallocating the water and sewer, which council has made the motion to do that and submitting it through the state, we are still looking at approximately a $3,866,484 remaining balance to fund the police and fire buildings. So in order to fund those, we do have options that are available and affordable to council. Some of those options are utilizing our current fund balance. But we also, it has been the direction of certain members of council who are interested in potentially looking at going with a bond at our last work-study session that was brought up. So I'm just asking for council's kind of motion to at least engage with, because it does take a lot of work and effort, getting what our bond rating is going to be, getting what our rates are going to be, to at least start working with some of the bond consultants to bring forth that information back to council so they can make a educated response on how they would like to fund the remaining $4 million balance.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I guess procedurally, why does this need to be brought to council? I had thought that the study session, it pretty much was discussed that bonding was an option that the majority of council was willing to explore. I thought direction to get that information for October so we could know how this is going to be funded and make that decision. Now, we are not going to get the report till February because now we're doing an official motion to direct what I thought council kind of directed back in July.
Well, I think there was a, I think you're right. There was some direction. There was no vote to go forward.
Right, not in a study session, but, you know, in terms of.
Totally right.
What options to pursue. Procedurally, why would it have to be a vote? Given it's just pursuing an option.
I don't think it has to be. I think it's, he's going to have to spend some money and get, get.
It's just kind of crazy that this was discussed back in July, and it's the end of October, and now the report to assist in the further decision making on the funding won't be delivered until February of 2025. It just seems like, I thought we were going to get the information at this meeting when we were discussing the guaranteed, you know, the maximum price and everything like that. It just, I was surprised just to see on one page, formalized the direction that was given at the study session of bonding would be an option that would be viable to explore for most of council. But I, that would be your guys' point to make, I guess, if you're in favor of the bonding.
Mr. Rubello?
This is just a, Dustin, this is just basically a discovery type of action we're doing to sort of get, get the information and so forth. Is that what's happening? Seventy?
That is correct. And back to July, one of the hard parts with July during that work-study session was we hadn't, at that point, there was no action by council to know what that shortfall would be. We're just now finding out tonight that the reallocation of the water has went through. It would have been a larger, significant amount of money that we would have been bonding for, potentially $6 million instead of $4 million. I also did not know exactly what council's decision was going to be on the police and fire building as well, if that was voted down and was told to relook at it, or if we were going to downsize the budget. So at that point, neither one of those were finalized, and there is no, where we need to bond here tomorrow. So, and hopefully, interest rates are continually going down, which would also be more beneficial to the community as well.
I, I think that we were thinking about this, you know, over the past few months, that I think we were all sort of looking at bonding as probably a darn good, a darn good issue to do. So with that, I will make a motion in utmost confidence that this will be a great thing and a great thing for St. Clair Shores. Mani mano. Let's go in the right direction, and I will move to direct city administration to prepare a report on the option of bonding for outstanding project costs.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to two passes. Thank you. Eight is bids, Congress, we don't have any. Item nine is consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Support. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item 10 is updates and files by required council meetings. I think Dustin is out. Thank you for attending. We appreciate that. Matt, can you provide that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Can you read through the report that was put together by the city manager? Item number one, Ms. Rusi mentioned that some corrections needed in the designated assessor entered local agreement. First opt-out should be act mistake on.
Is your mic on?
I'm pushing my fancy button here.
Okay, you're pushing the right button. Sometimes they get a little confused over there.
Maybe it's just not coming, maybe it's coming through the TV, but not to us.
Hopefully, the millions at home can hear me.
It doesn't sound like it's working.
Handheld microphone too.
Need the perfect range where it's close enough.
Steve's got a, we got a thumbs up.
We can hear you. Just want to make sure you can be heard at home.
As long as I'm not getting beard brush on it, yeah. Just item number one, an email was sent regarding the mistake in the agreement. The response that I received stated back, due to several unresponsive assessing districts, no formal agreement will be done. Item number two, Mr. Rubello asked that the boats at Levon Streets be removed in the winter so that there are no oil or gas spilled into the canal. We are waiting on legal opinion on that from Mr. Erie. Number three, Mr. Vitale mentioned that the cultivation station needs to be painted. It's also become a political signage dumping station. The city attorney spoke with the owner of the former cultivation station property and told him that the plywood must be painted and the building must be repaired. CDI has now received tentative design from Stucky Vitale, but with no formal application has been made to the building department.
So where, where would we be in terms of getting that painted? And are we issuing violations?
Yeah, so the next portion of that, code enforcement invested the political signage. I thought it was a more reference to it. So yes, the short answer I'm getting is yes, we are looking at issuing violations on the outstanding painting issues.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to use our new civil infraction. Maybe will this be our first application of our new ordinance here?
Actually, councilman, a complaint warrant has been issued, and we have a court date pending in November. I also believe that Mr. Erie has spoken with the property owner, but I was by there today, and there's no change.
Yeah, I don't really care who they've been talking to architecturally. It's not much effort to go out there and put some paint on OSB.
Understood. Continue, Matthew.
Item number four, Mr. Vitale mentioned marks on Violet Street and asked if the city plans to do any patching. Response is the green marks are locations of sewers painted by consumers. Consumers will be replacing a gas service line at 23027 Violet. There's no patching plan for that location. So it was a single household seeing repairs there.
Yep, I did explain that to the resident.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Vitale mentioned the tree on Violet Street is, that is right on the property line that blocks the line of sight. The response here is that we will review the tree and the shrubs and discuss with code enforcement to see what can be done to improve the neighbor's line of sight when using their own driveway.
I, I don't think the issue is probably so much the tree, although that is abnormal. I think it's the overgrown brush, the weed trees and everything else that's around the tree.
Yeah, your picture was definitely told a thousand words there. There was a lot of overgrowth in that spot.
Thanks.
Mr. Rubello asked what canals the city is responsible for? The city is responsible for dredging Alexander Canal, the Lock St. Clair Marina Canal between the municipal campus and the Milner, and Milner Street. Those are items where we have drains.
So that's three. So that's three.
Ms. Rusi, number seven, Ms. Rusi asked that parking fines and security at farmers markets be reevaluated. Response here is that we are reevaluating the parking fee and security service for the 2025 market season. Number eight, Ms. Rusi asked that the update on the Safer Grant application. FEMA has asked, FEMA has released five rounds of funding for the Safer Grant and we were not among those selected. Chief Piper spoke with the grant helped us to confirm that there are no more rounds of funding. The help desk also stated that cities not selected will be receiving official letters in the near future.
Okay, so we didn't receive it?
We were not so fortunate. Number nine, Ms. Rusi asked for an update on the components of the water bill. The front of the water bill is being mapped by the vendor, the back of the bill, the revised bill with the new explanation of the fees are shown below. An update since the packet is that we had confirmation on the front of the bill as well and I have a full draft to now share with council tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Number ten, Mr. Karen asked for an update on the communications strategy plan and asked for timing. We're currently working with the Communications Commission and Matt Baumgarten to put together communications plan. Once the final draft is complete, it will go back to council communications commission for final approval. Next communication commission is November 13, 2024. So it may be ready for the November or December council meetings. We're actually hopefully targeting the November council meeting to bring this before council. Item number eleven, Mr. Karen asked for the city-specific locations where Christmas lights will be hung. That is court, the golf course, Masonic, city hall, police department, when it is completed. Number twelve, Mr. Karen asked for water mains, which water mains have lead joints? DPW is working to prepare that list for you, sir. Number thirteen, Mr. Karen asked for a list of where the contractor removed trees and where the dirt was left. An email was sent on 1017 and the attached list is in the document, or in your packet. Number fourteen.
Sir? Sorry, on that one, the tree list was like a little over 440 properties. And on another email, I think Brian had a list of like 61 that did require restoration work to be done. Could you confirm with Brian if out of the 400 or so, they only found 61 that needed to kind of have work done?
I'll confirm that with Mr. Bradcott.
Thank you.
So number fourteen here, Mr. Karen mentioned Wild Bill sign in front is not in compliance with the agreements, with its agreement with the city. Code enforcement revisited the Wild Bill's property and issued a notice of violation for the banner sign. A permit has been issued for the new signage on the east side, Harper frontage of the building, with the stipulation that the roof sign be removed. Item fifteen, Mr. Karen asked what date the site plan for the Ridgeway property was approved? The site plan approval for 24101 Jefferson was initially approved at the August 21, 2023 city council meeting with the stipulation that developer obtained its approved closure report from Egle within six months after the environmental remediation at the site. It was discovered that the approved timeline was not adequate for Egle to complete its review. Given that, at its February 2024 meeting, council approved a six-month extension to the site plan approval to allow time for Egle approval of the closure report for the property. The Egle letter approving the closure was dated May 29, 2024. Therefore, 12-month site plan approval period runs through May 29 of 2025. Last item, number sixteen, Ms. Karen asked when CDBG truck was approved? The response to Councilman Karen's question was provided to council on 1017. Included in the response was the cover sheet of the narrative detailing the funding responsive, funding response provided at budget time. Initially, communications with several dealerships about leasing the vehicle was provided. Info was attached below. There were no residents' comments included in the report.
Yes, Mr. Erie? Yes, on Mr. Rabello's question regarding the boat of the general, on the property in the canal on the Levon property, I did meet with the owner of the home and the owner of the boat. And he and I agreed on a relatively short turnaround about 10 days from now to have the boat removed and taken out and stored for the winter in another location. I do not hold out high hopes that that will be complied with and just want to let you know that I'm keeping an eye on it and working with Ms. Pike to accomplish what needs to be accomplished.
If he leaves that in the, can I, okay. If he leaves that in the water, can that get towed out by like Towboat USA?
You'll have to reevaluate that and look at that. I don't think he's prepared to answer that question at the moment.
All right.
Tugboat.
So with that, we'll go to comments by individual council members. Mr. Vitale.
Well, that's quick.
He deserved.
Mr. Erie, did we have, do I recall correctly regarding the home on 11 Mile Road at the corner, I think of Shox, near the corner of Shox Street? Do we have a court date on the 21st?
Do we have a court date or did we have a court?
Did we, because at this point we're past court hours?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that case was up today.
And I'm not sure it was the 21st, I could be incorrect. It was? Denise, do you know how that went today?
Mayor, council, good evening. Mr. Albright was in court with the property owner. The property owner has agreed to sell the property. The purchase agreement is not in place as of yet, but he has a week. I've also sent over the court order just in case to DTE. If you recall, we had an issue with them disconnecting the power so that we can begin that process should we need to.
Okay, so wasn't this extension a period of time for him to try to sell the property?
It was. He had a couple of purchasers, I don't know exactly how many, but I do know that he has selected one. And it's a matter of putting the paperwork in place is what he told the judge.
I guess, you know, maybe it works differently when you go to court as a derelict property owner. I've always thought a deadline would mean I have to have something signed by the 21st. Apparently that doesn't mean anything and just there's some people who want it is good enough for the judge.
There is, and I was not in attendance or building official?
I'm not faulting you in that way, this is a criticism of the court. But, okay, and I'm glad we are on a parallel track with DTE to get enforcement over there because there's certainly no effort to improve the property.
May I just add one thing? Yes, Councilman Vitale, there essentially, over the years, I think this council has concluded, and I have concluded, that there can be an endless number of excuses that if given some sense of rationality, do tend to be listened to by courts and given, given those kinds of extensions. It could be frustrating to landlords, it could be frustrating to cities, but it is to some degree unfortunate, but that is indeed the state of affairs.
Well, it's like you never know when you've really got to comply with something. There is no enforcement if the court doesn't take its own orders seriously. How do you expect others to take the orders of the court serious? Well, that's disappointing, but I understand it. I think actually that's about all I had, other than to say that this is our last council meeting before the big election day. And I'm going to do something differently than I've ever done in the past and I will utilize this early voting so that, you know, if some situation arises on election day, I could get hit by a bus or something. So I guess I'll go in and vote and make sure my vote counts. I would advise other people to do the same and we don't know what the lines might be horrendous from what we've seen early voting in other states and things like that. So if you're planning to vote and you're going to wait till election day because you're a traditionalist, you might want to, you might want to readjust that plan and get down and vote. But that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess?
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a lot this evening as well. I do want to extend my condolences to the Mary Kowalski family and you're in my thoughts and prayers. With that, something fun, we did Halloween in the park this weekend, which, Sunday yesterday, which was amazing. I can't even believe that I was standing out there in the, close to the end of October, wishing I had my shorts on. It was the most beautiful weather, great turnout of kids and parents and a great turnout of the vendors that were there handing out candy. And I just thoroughly enjoyed myself and looked out at the lake at one point and I felt like I was in some resort. Just, I mean, it just felt so good that day. And it felt like we were in a place doing a great thing and having fun and it just felt like a perfect day in summer when it was the 20th of October. Speaking of good weather in our last social district is this coming Saturday. And I'm really excited about it. My husband and I talked about going away this weekend and we're like, we can't, it's the last social district. But the weather is not going to be like it was in Halloween in the park. It's going to be drastically different at 59 degrees as the high so far. But it's going to be great because we have Rock Covers, or Paper Covers Rock, which is an amazing band. And I hope to see out there, it'll be a fun time. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Mr. Rabello?
You had to add on to that social district, that's our October 26 is the final one. And I personally want to thank BAS Security Systems for sponsoring the whole social district, really every concert we had, all 12 of them. So thank you and your husband, okay. Couldn't do it without sponsors, that's for sure. And I sort of want to call it the over, the over and out concert of 2024. We get busy in 2025. It has generated so much interest, it's just a great thing to see, positive thing for St. Clair Shores. Denise, I have some things I want to give you. I didn't want to give addresses over the, over the television. So there's some violation stuff going on. And on the opposite end of the beautiful thing, we just pulled the boat today. So she's gone. Okay, so God, and it seems that there may be some good days left, you know? And on that note, I see our Parks Director back here, Parks and Rec Director, Rob Spinazzola is back there. Rob, maybe over the next couple of weeks, we can discuss, unless you already have, lighting up the pier a little bit more than we've had in the past. I was a little concerned that somebody might not see it. And if we can maybe use some different lights or try to make it a little bit more noticeable coming in from the lake.
We are, I know TIFF has been involved and they actually put that money in their budget. And I know Parks and Rec and Mr. Spinazzola are evaluating that, but there is money in there to get some solar lights on the pier. So we're happy and thankful for TIFF and he's working on that, so we should have that. Mr. Rabello, hopefully by spring, correct?
I should have known, Rob Spinazzola, ahead of the curve. A chip wire, fire up. Continuing, do we have an ordinance against food trucks at gas stations? Not, they're not parked there all night or anything, but can you pull a food truck up, Denise? You don't have to get out, just, okay.
Is there a specific, is there a specific location?
There was a location, I love mine on a little Mac with a food truck.
We've been in touch with that proprietor.
Okay, is it allowed or not allowed?
No.
It is not allowed.
Okay, so someone can't pull a food truck in for the day and sell whatever it wears? Okay, all right, that answers that. Shattered glass, Teal Street and Kimberly Lane. Were we able to pick that up? Somebody busted, I don't know, it was a lot of glass down. I had a picture of it, it was reported, I don't know.
Is that today?
Yesterday, or, yeah, Saturday.
All right, well, chief will look into that.
Okay, somebody, it came out of one of the garbage trucks and, I don't know, dragged 100 yards down the road. All right, somebody can look into that. Flat tires left, chief, you got my message today? Chief Allen, this is one of these cases where he went up and out of his way to get something removed, an ordinance violation of a van with flat tires, and they came back again with flat tires after whatever amount of weeks that passed. So if, you can, I don't mean to stick you on them or whatever, but if the guy, listen, I know, I know the guy, they don't listen, I get it, okay? I wanted to ask about the choice of walls that we have when we have, the walls that come between the businesses and the residents? Do we have a choice of what the, I guess the landlord can use what type of wall?
Ms. Pike, you got to
Yeah, for this one.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We actually need a mic down there and you might not always have to get up, so maybe Steve can get us a mic down there.
I really thought you had one down there, I'm sorry.
No problem. The ordinance is very specific as to the type of wall that you have to use. It's a monolithic core. So the answer, the, the amount of variability and what the owner can use is limited.
Yeah, because I, I had a call from one of them, I don't know who it is. And they were just like different, you know, some type of, having not just one guy, you know, the main game in town, maybe like one, two, or three guys, that would be acceptable for this council to put up. He thinks you can do it cheaper and still get the same results of, and just for anyone listening, I'm not a fan of these walls, but we have them and that's just how it is. So if we can get some choices for people.
Unfortunately, we don't control the industry. So the ordinance, as I said, is very specific. I can't control how many vendors do that type of a wall. I have had the conversation with the individual that I think you're referring to.
Yeah.
And that is not something that CDI nor the city can control. But our ordinance language is very concise.
Okay, well, maybe we can take a look at it. I'll send you some examples, probably include some other council people here and just see if they can, you know, if that's something that doesn't look so bad.
Okay.
Okay, because they said there's, you know, the cost can be a lot less than what they're paying right now.
I think the durability is what we're going for.
Yeah, okay. Prefab walls and so forth.
Candice, I need to distance subcommittee.
What's that? Well, let's just continue. We're not going to have a discussion.
All righty, and if, Matthew? I just want to show some pictures of Sunday, which, hey, listen, man, we got, this is a great city. There's a lot of, this is a lot of good stuff that happens. That was my favorite on the left, that was a mini Elvis guy there, okay? And I thought it was really cute anyways. Can you flip back to the, that's my dog, Happy Halloween, okay? Everyone knows Rick over there from the F O E Eagles. And the picture on the right, okay, get a good picture of that, whoever behind there. That picture on the right is something that is so representative of St. Clair Shores. These are the folks from Whistle Stop. On my left arm is the grandmother. The daughter on her left arm. On my right arm, the granddaughter. All of them out there. That is a special picture because I think that represents our business community. There's three generations of Whistle Stop people and it was great to see that, almost brought a tear to my eye. If you can flip through, and that's my dog, Elvis, or not Elvis, but that's Cleo and she says, "Happy Halloween," okay? So that's all I have for tonight and happy back to the future day, October 21, 2015. He went into the future and we're nine years past that.
All righty, thank you. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I guess to go off of Dave's question and the response about the food trucks. So what would make a gas station different than one of the breweries that always have food trucks?
The way we interpret the ordinance is that the brewery is a food-related business and therefore it is an ancillary use to what they do. A gas station is not necessarily a food-related business. So other than a convenience store, you know, it is not something that would be a like use.
I guess, you know, I know the summer city hall had food trucks. I mean, here, opposed to State Hall, where it's said to be having fat ro- of State Hall, we're excited to be having Fat Rob's Food Love at City Hall tomorrow, July 16th, from 11:30 to 1:30. Stop by our parking lot for a burger. How is City Hall a food business?
It was considered a special event. So, if a gas station were having an approved special event that included a food truck, that would be permissible, but to have it every day.
City Hall had a special event permit.
It would be considered, I would have to actually ask the clerk's office for that.
Yeah, that would be interesting. If State Hall got a permit to have Fat Rob's Food Love food truck in the parking lot for two hours.
Sure.
Because it just, it seems like maybe we should be revising some of these ordinances. We talked about the food trucks. We talked about when they're trying to get involved with the business licensing of them. I mean, maybe this is something, I'm not in favor of having this be restrictive, but maybe we need specific ordinances so we're not interpreting ordinances like that, you know? And I think this is something that we've seen be very beneficial to businesses. So, maybe we can address this ordinance-wise so we don't have to be interpreting ordinances in different ways. That's all. Thank you. Not more council comments. That's all. I wanted her to be able to sit down. We probably should get a microphone over there or something.
Agreed.
I think that would be better, especially when the clearance is so little between that. It's just, they're all, it would be so much better, yeah, if we could just, if we're having people sit there, if we could make sure they're able to participate in the meeting too, just like we can from the table. So, I guess, congratulations to the St. Clair Shores Saints 2013 white team who went all the way to Pittsburgh for the Three Rivers Tournament and they came home champions. They were undefeated for all five games and they worked really hard to achieve their success. Their dedication and achievements are something we should be proud of. So, congratulations to the St. Clair Shores Saints 2013 white team for their success at the Three Rivers Tournament earlier this month. I want to give a thank you to Parks and Rec for the Halloween in the Park. That was just like was mentioned yesterday. It monopolized my weekend with everything. And it's always, despite that, it's always my favorite weekend. It's so much fun to see the kids and interact with the kids and to see how excited everyone is. And it's a nice, it's a nice event. I think it's something to say you can be really proud of. A thank you to all the vendors who participated. It's a long afternoon. It's expensive afternoon. Candy's not cheap, especially this year. But we had kids coming at the very end who, you know, we were toward, I think, the middle of the route or toward the end-ish, and they had full buckets right even at the end. You know, I've been involved in this event where you've seen sometimes vendors run out. It seems like everyone was well-prepared. I think the wristbands helped. Kids walked away with so much candy, their little buckets were not able to hold it all and they were making witches hats and just ancillary buckets or giving to their parents. The whole, they were loaded down. So, I know they had a good time. Personally, I want to thank, I had over, I had like 200 Halloween inflatables set up out there, which was a lot.
Yes.
And I want to thank my team for helping me and doing a lot of it. I'm not a very electrically oriented person. I can, I know where I want them, but in terms of hooking them up, that's my dad, that's my mom, that's my sister Cassandra. Her husband, my brother-in-law helped out. My nephew Logan helped out as much as he could. He's four. And Logan's godfather, Andy, came out to help with the takedown. That was it. We put over 200 up and we took over 200 down, just with that little group of people. So, every year, we try to do more and more. And John Kira is out there with all his inflatables and he has a good collection too. So, we enjoy it. It's actually kind of, I just, I'm glad I'm not into the Christmas inflatables because I collect the Halloween inflatables and that's it. If I was like, oh, those Christmas, it would be nuts because I store them all at my house. It would just be crazy. But I enjoy the opportunity. I acquire these things specifically for Halloween in the park and I enjoy the ability and the opportunity to put them out too. Kids love them. You know, it's always exciting to see which ones like the kids like the best. Chucky's always a favorite. Kids love Chucky. I don't know. Garfield, they like Garfield this year. I had no kids with no Garfield. I guess the movie came out. Wednesday Addams, the Blueys. The Blueys were a hit and the Minions are always my personal favorite. So, thank you to all the work for Parks and Rec for making the park look beautiful and well-organized. I think the flow was great. The wristbands worked. It did have some of the issues that came up previously and every year it gets a little bit better and better and better. So, it was a nice event. The weather definitely did help. I had a sweatshirt to wear because we were dressing like Nightmare Before Christmas, you know, character shirts and like sweatshirts and stuff. And I was so hot at the end. It was awful. I've never been hot at that event. One year, the first year John and I did it together, we had to, I had to bring like the comforter off my bed. It was so cold up at Blossom Heath. So, and this year it was, I was too hot in a sweatshirt. So, it's nuts, but beautiful weather too. So, the cultural committee, we need members. A couple of our other committees, we always, there's some member turnover. People move out of the city. People pass away. People decide, you know, other things in your life come up. So, check the city website for openings we have. I know we have a couple on the cultural committee. We have a lot of fun things planned. So, if you're interested in serving on a committee, check out the city website, scsmi.net, see what opportunities are available. It's just a one-page front and back application, really simple, and we would love to have you. And finally, sad note, I got the email about Mary Kowalski's passing. I was actually at the park doing some setup on Saturday and tragic, just, she didn't get much time of her retirement to enjoy and she deserved a lot of time to enjoy. I always enjoy, you know, I loved working with her. She was a very nice person, very professional always. I would get the, you know, I've been up here, like I said, 15 years at this point, lots of packets, and I don't recall ever having an issue with any agenda item for the clerk's office that she made. Like, coming out for, you know, more voting booths or this or this. I would get to a point where I would just be able just to skim it, but I wouldn't have to ever raise an issue with anything because it was always just so well put together. She was very ethical. She had a lot of integrity. She was very professional. And she always had a smile on her face too. And it's a big loss. She did a lot for the city and I wish she had more time to herself. So, that was, we thank her for all her years and her family will be in my thoughts and prayers, definitely. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I'll start with some of my memories of Mary Kowalski and the great work that she did here. Because I think any of us that started on council in your first few days, that's who you're talking to to get on boarded and that. And basically teaching you everything was, being elected official was pretty much going through her for all those times. So, all the valuable input she had from that, all the innovation that she put into the clerk's office, bringing in passport applications here and figuring that whole process out and getting that certification done, the recognition across the county, across the state as being, as an expert, just not in elections, but anything clerk-related. And that was a resource that was right here in St. Clair Shores, that she was there for, you know, those couple of decades, being that source of excellence in the city clerk's office. And even when we get to having to deal with everything in COVID and us figuring out how to do meetings on Zoom, and she is the one that had to figure that out. And with this council, that was not easy. Managing mute buttons and what to mute, unmute and all this, trying to figure all that out on the fly for the first time.
You're still on mute.
And then, yeah. And it was like, Mary, take me off mute. And it was just like, she had to figure all that out and got that. After the first meeting, she got all figured out and ran really smooth after that. But it just showed her what, all the challenges that she would take on and just excel that for this community. So, should be greatly missed. I know we were all sad when she retired, but it was, it was her time to retire. It's time to her enjoy it. And I wish she would have had more time to enjoy her retirement than she got. It's very unfortunate. So, prayers to all of our family as they cope with that loss. And so, kind of staying on the voter theme, because I know as we're going through the cases last couple of weeks, prior to hearing about Mary passing away, I did have a risen ass. It's like, well, what do you think Mary's thinking of this? Of everything the city was going through and the clerk's office having to go through with these cases. And so, even with all this, Mary was on people's minds. But kind of the sad thing, after, you know, we had all of our comments at the last meeting. It got reported in the Shore Sentinel. Nobody else picked it up. They just took whatever the AG office put out and ran with it. And it's kind of sad that I think the Shore Sentinel reporter had actually reached out to the AG's office and even one of the candidates for prosecutor. Couldn't get any verbal statements. Got a statement from the AG's office, got a text message from a candidate for prosecutor. And it was just like, if you're going after these people, you can at least talk to a reporter. And Alyssa's one of the, the absolutely least threatening reporter you'd ever meet and that, and in terms of the stories that she writes for the Sentinel. So, it's kind of sad that people just can't stand up and voice what they feel directly, that they have to send prescribed statements out to the press. And one of the voter cases did go through a hearing on Friday and it was reported it was held over for trial. But the sad thing is, the Attorney General's office is doing press releases on the case again, and which then triggers not only their name, the other six names all had to be in the press again and that, all over this case. And it is just kind of sad. And the things that we're now dealing with is reassuring our election workers, hey, it's okay to work our election. It'll be fine. You know, there's no threat to you working our election. The people who are voting, there's no threat to voting. You don't have to worry about being targeted, you know, trying to tell people, no, this, there's a very isolated reason these cases exist. And it deals with the political climate of today and not about what people actually do to go vote or help work our election. So, hopefully we can keep reassuring that. Yeah, I would echo Councilman Vitali's encouragement to use the early voting. You know, we've had it in February. We had it in August. It is a very smooth operation here at City Hall. You can pick what day during that week you want to come. And it wasn't used that much. You know, I think it was like 2% to 3% total of the people that turned, not the voting population, other people that voted, used the early voting. And I know, I came in, I had me driving by City Hall on a Saturday. It's like, oh, I'll just swing in and go vote. It's the same process. You get the ballot. You fill it out. It goes into this secure tabulator and you're done and your vote's recorded.
That was during the primary, right?
It was during the August primary, yep. And so, take advantage of that because you don't know what will happen on Election Day. You know, we end up having to have, you know, 21 scattered sites around the city for Election Day. Equipment issues happen. And I complimented Amy on one of the past elections where she had to go out with her toolkit to get a machine working at her precinct on the fly. If that, if you're voting here at City Hall, all the staff is already here. So, there's literally no downtime or anything that happens around here. So, please take advantage of that. And it also alleviates a lot of the work at the precincts. And we're fully staffed here. And so, Abby, what date does the early voting start?
It actually starts this Saturday. We're open 8:30 to 4:30.
Okay. So, early voting kicks off this Saturday. So, take advantage of it if you can. Again, you're welcome to vote however you wish, but the resources are here. Before I get to the couple of other announcements here, due to follow-up of, Mr. Lent did send the email from the auditor. And basically, he emailed her on Tuesday, October 15th. And Ally, I know we've talked about before on this question, council is considering reallocating money that was previously used for water rate stabilization and lead service line replacement from ARPA funds back to the water fund balance. I think that reversed, but. This purchase was made in the 2023 budget year. Are we able to add a footnote to this year's budget indicating the chargeback from the Water Department fund balance to the ARPA budget? This is an allowable change per Treasury in regards to the SLF RF reporting expenses and say that same rule that Councilman Rusi had asked earlier. The response came from Ally, our auditor, on Thursday, not Friday, Thursday at 4:37. Hi Dustin, I wanted to run this past a few of our team members for responding. Based on what you provided below, it does appear allowable to change course and apply the ARPA dollars to a different project. Appear allowable. So, that was that follow-up. Yeah, I think when we get to, Councilwoman Rusi had mentioned about the quality of packets and how we never had to question anything from Mary. And I think we got a lot of, a lot of department heads that do a great job, but it's like, when we're not getting the direct information and it's just kind of thrown out there of, they said it's okay? The actual words do matter. Is it allowable? It appears allowable. Okay.
But she has to still ask a couple of people.
Yes. All right. So, back to the Halloween Fun Fest. Yeah, great event yesterday, great weather. I think I counted over 1,500 kids that we had come through. And so, that's just a great turnout for the event and a lot of kids. And unlike past events, normally Councilwoman Rusi, we're typically towards the end of the route. And we get later in the day to where other vendors have run out and kids don't have that much. We didn't have that. They're still walking away with boatloads of candy at the end. So, I think it's great. The vendors are all coming in prepared and the kids are having a great time and a lot of great costumes with the kids and that. So, and I do enjoy, it's a long process getting all those ones up and down, but and a lot of Advil they take afterward. But the best thing, feeling I get is when those first set of kids, I get a little different advantage because I tend to block Councilwoman Rusi's view from where she sits and hand out candy and where I'm standing and hand out candy. So, I get to see the kids' reaction when they walk through the hallway of inflatables that we set up. So, I see all their first impressions and that. And then I hand them off to you as I go around to the 30, 40 minions you got set up and you had, I don't know, there's 30 or so Nightmare Before Christmas characters are set up and all sorts of other horror story characters, Harry Potter. She has a little different theme in each one. I kind of mix all mine up. So, but no, that's a great event. And thanks to Parks and Rec Activities Committee for putting all the work in, setting that all up and getting all the vendors together to make it a great event for the kids. So, wonderful job. And on to the next event for Halloween. So, Downtown St. Clair Shores will be having their Scelebration this Saturday from 12 to 3 in downtown. So, there'll be a bunch of pet costume contests, children costume contests, all sorts of fun activities going on between 12 and 3 in Downtown St. Clair Shores. For all the details, you can follow the Downtown St. Clair Shores Facebook page. And you can get all the details on that event for this Saturday. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freder.
Thanks, Mary. So, Mary Kowalski, obviously condolences to her family and friends. When I first got on council, more, a little over 20 years ago, she was the first one to swear me in. And, you know, you kind of remember that and how that goes down and how fearful you are of the first, that you wanted to do it right and all that, but yet, you know, she was right there just making them short repeat things as opposed to the long repeat things that you do. So, she was just a special, special person. And, you know, I counted her among my friends, no matter what we came in for, she was going to find it out, make sure we got that information, as does Abby and her team. So, I appreciate you following in those great footsteps and doing a great job. And of course, I wish you guys a lot of success in this upcoming election. So, how are we doing with workers?
We're looking good. We have our last three classes this week. So, as soon as they come to class, we'll be able to place them into the precinct. So, we're looking pretty good right now.
All right. So, that's, that's good news because we were all worried about what this stuff could have done. So, all right, that's fabulous. I also wanted to thank all of the service groups that were out at Halloween in the park, Optimists, and I think some Kiwanis folks were out there and some others. And Brian, I know you were out there. I saw a picture of you handing out something or setting up or something. Brian Owens out there. So, I want to thank all them. And Candace, you and John, I know you do a great job. Every year, I know it's your, it's your favorite ones, right? So, thanks for doing that and congrats. And Linda, I saw you were out there too. So, way to go. And Dave, taking pictures of that, of the Whistle Stop family, which this is Whistle Stop time right now from Nautico Christmas. This is where they, this is their big time of year. So.
They already put up their lights.
Yeah. So, you know, if you're out and about and you're on Harper there, South of Nine, stop in. They got a lot of cool stuff. Matt, I had a resident call me. This is kind of a weird thing. There was steam coming out of a storm sewer on Raymond. Raymond and I want to say Mac, something like that. Just one, not the one before it, not the one after it. Just one, not the one before it, not the one after it. It's the strangest thing. We really don't have steam coming out of that. Mayor, are you familiar with any of that?
I am not.
So I'm worried that it might have been something else.
Sure.
Ghost? Yeah, ghost or chemicals, right? So.
Dragon.
It is that time of year. I don't think anybody's putting dry ice down there, so what's that?
As far as we know, Cousin Eddie hasn't rolled into town yet.
Yeah. I don't know. He might have been at Wally's yesterday, I'm just saying. So anyway, I'll get to the exact spot and we can pass along to Mr. Babcock. I just, I just want to make sure nothing's in there that shouldn't be in there. All right, that's a little freaky. So I know we had the Slinski green roof, green farmhouse roof on here and we put, we moved it off. I'm getting a little worried. Are we, are we going to be okay waiting another month to do anything on that roof?
Well, I just wasn't able to go on this agenda. So we'll try to get it on the next one. We're moving as fast as we can.
Okay.
We have requirements, it's a historic building, so.
Yeah. Well, I just don't want to lose anything inside because we didn't do it in time, so. Mayor, have you heard anything more on the Nine Mile, the Amazon building? I know we mentioned some stuff.
No, no, we have not.
Okay. So I know they're not inside yet, but we thought they might be.
You are correct. That's what we were told, but you are correct.
All right. And then at the, at the last meeting, it was, it was very unfortunate. Christina Hines kind of got thrown under the bus a bit here and she had sent out a, some text messages, I won't say she did it, but she would take responsibility for it, but it was her staff. And we sent out some Facebook posts to raise some money off of what was going on with Mr. Lucido and the AG. And I felt bad for, you know, Ms. Burgess and myself were kind of mentioned by somebody that came down from Chesterfield to take a shot. But, you know, the bottom line was on Saturday, she took the Facebook post down, realizing that this, this affects people's lives. So she did the right thing. Couldn't, couldn't retract text messages, you just can't do that. So I give her credit and I guess I just want to say personally sorry that that affected you in that way, sort of, sort of sideways. And with that, I'm going to give you a little bit of stuff that's going on at the library. So library patrons are invited to join us at the library for a delightful evening of readers theater presented by Girls Point Theater, the GPT, on Tuesday, October 22nd. The troupe of actors will present a program of readers theater beginning at 6:30 PM, which includes short vignettes, jokes, fairy tales and inspirational thoughts. This Devil's Night, and everybody knows that's 10:30, October 30th, join Mystic Mitten as they dive deep into the thrilling world of ghost hunting across the Mitten State. Experience the eerie tales of local hauntings, see firsthand the cutting-edge devices that make these investigations possible. Program starts at 6:30 PM and registration is required and can be done by phone, online or in person. Join the library as we delve into the lives of Powhatan Indians before European rival differentiate between fact and fiction, surround the legends of the Powhatan people and the frequently mythologized Pocahontas. This program will be presented virtually by an educator from the Virginia Museum of History and Culture. Attendees may view it either in person, at the library or at home via Zoom. Registration opens October 23rd and can be done online by phone or in person. The library is also very excited to announce updates to our Makerspace activities. We will now offer the opportunity to book time through our Makerspace Hour for individuals and small groups to work independently on their own projects or collaborate in small groups. For more information about either of these events, please see our upcoming newsletter in November or check our online calendar. And I just wanted to mention too that, you know, Candace, myself, Dustin, Stephanie, our library, our main librarian, head librarian, we're working on trying to finalize, trying to get to the final spot for some of the renovations that are going on in there. And it's, it's pretty exciting. There's going to be some very cool stuff, including a new genealogy area. And once again, most of that was money that came from the feds. So we want to thank them for that and look forward to some new library stuff. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Dustin, as you know, was sick. He left, so we don't have a city manager's report. So we'll move on to item 13, audience participation, a five-minute time limit. Views and opinions expressed under audience participation are those of the individual citizen only and do not necessarily represent the views and opinions of mayor, city council, administration of the city, St. Clair Shores. Anyone like to speak? Mr. Deacon? Anyone else? Commissioner Zinner? If you, if you would sign up too, and then Mr. Deacon talk first and you can sign up second. Good evening, Mr. Deacon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you all tonight?
Very good. Thank you.
I too want to express my sympathies for Mary's passing. However, I can give you firsthand knowledge about the competence of our new city manager, our city clerk, I should say. I attended one of her training sessions and she did a marvelous job.
Great to hear.
I do have a problem and I reiterated to all of you in an email about how I was treated last week when I went to the clerk's office. I've never been that disrespected in my life. To have someone stand there and give totally erroneous information, I was aghast. I was unable to work on the primary election, but I was told that I was not selected to work on the final election. And once again, that's not legal. So Madam Clerk, I think you should take a look at what's going on. The Parks and Rec Committee, once again, has failed for a long time to report any minutes on the, to the city. And so I don't know what's going on with them. I have another issue again today with the priority pickup of my trash. Once again, they leave all kinds of garbage in the street. I watch them and they just throw stuff around, couldn't care less what falls on the ground. Once again, I certainly would be remiss if I didn't ask that you take a look at the swimming pool use fees. You know, we're living in a blue collar community and to nickel and dime a young family trying to entertain their kids and charge them extra to use a property that they paid for with their taxes. You know, we started off a couple of years ago, we were going to do some repairs, fix up the slide. And my recollection was initially you allocated 600,000 and it ended up almost 2 million. And, you know, as Mr. Karen says, money does not grow on trees and we certainly need to take a look at how we're spending our money, make sure that we're spending it on need and not want.
The slide was not 2 million.
I beg your pardon?
The slide was not 2 million dollars.
What about the infrastructure that you unpeeled? I mean, it was like an onion. Come on. You know, you spent that money on the, on the pool.
On the pool, not on the slide.
The only other thing I say is everyone should vote. You have a right to do so. We're living in a country that is on the verge of becoming extremely liberal. I'm in the process of reading a book called, When a Country Eliminates God. Very important. Think back what happened in 1932 up to 1945. That's when the government took over everything, including educating your children. It's happening in Europe already, in Germany. If you do not send your children to a public school, you can be arrested and your children removed from your home. Is that the kind of country we want to live in? I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Deacon signing, that'd be great. Commissioner Zinner, anyone else? Okay. Good evening, Commissioner.
Hi there. Commissioner Barbara Zinner, Harrison Township. I forgot that before when I was here and you reminded me. Thank you. There are just two things I want to say. We're in finance committees, getting ready for the budget, trying to prepare the budget for next year. I'd say it's interesting. Sometimes we smile, but things all work out in the end. I have the board, I think it'll be fine. And one other thing, I was at an event maybe six weeks ago and I was going around saying hello to people, which I normally do, and I came to a table with two gentlemen that were, I hadn't seen them before, but that's not unusual. And I was talking about different things and they didn't have a clue what I was talking about. So I just said, have a nice evening and went back to my table and more people were coming in. And then someone came, several men were going to that table. I said, oh, that's nice. And then the host stopped someone coming, who was coming in. He said, oh, come on up here. He wanted him to give, speak a few words, which he had not planned on speaking. And what he was talking about is he was one of the men going to that table and each of those gentlemen had lost a child to drugs. They had formed a group and there, I didn't hear what the last word of their name was, Fathers Against Something, and I don't know what it was. And that group of men were going to McComb County, Oakland County, out of the state, wherever they were asked to go. And like Nancy Reagan, she had a specific sentence that she would say. And what those men say is, one pill will kill. And I'm going to say it again. One pill will kill. And he really didn't say a lot more than that. He said, because he hadn't planned to say anything. And the host then came to the microphone and said, when he was a younger man, I don't know what kind of job he had, it was a physical job of some kind, because he said sometimes he would get hurt. Part of his body would get hurt, don't know what it was, I have no idea. And he said, a friend of his might say to him, you know, you're going to have a lot of pain tonight. I'll give you a pain pill. When I had surgery on the way home, I'll pick it up. He'd say, okay, yeah, that'll be good. I'll sleep tonight. I'll be able to sleep. I won't be in so much pain. He said now, he said, I would never take a pill unless I, I knew it was from a pharmacist because the drugs are all, are all laced with things. We've lost so many children because they don't know that one pill can kill. And it's good for us to remember that and don't be afraid to say that to our young people because they're so precious and they really don't necessarily know. Thank you very much. It's good to see everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go to the mayor's comments? Okay, we'll bring it back and I just, I just want to thank Parks and Rec. It was a, I know it's been already talked about, but the Halloween in the park, just a great event, a lot of work done by Parks and Rec and a tremendous family event in St. Clair Shores. And just when you're out there, I know the rest of us here, you're proud of it. And it's, it's good to be in these events and feel proud of the community and proud of what we're doing. So hats off to them. I really appreciate that, to make those things run smoothly. And they do, they're big projects and they're run smoothly. So it's very much appreciated. With that, we'll need a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Support.
Mr. Frederick, support of Ms. Rusi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?